I have 7:00 PM, so I'd like to call the meeting to order. Mr. Chairman Lofton, would you leave some invocation, please, sir?
Yes, thank you. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, as we watch nature bring forth the beauty of spring, awakening from the winter's rest, we are reminded that we are fortunate to be able to live, work, and play in this county where the fruits of our labor are so abundant. Awaken in us, if you will, the spirit of community, of helping those less fortunate, and an abiding sense of appreciation for those who provide the security that keeps us safe and cares for us when we are in need. Guide this board tonight in our thoughts, words, and actions as we deliberate the issues before us, that our decisions will be the right ones for this community. In His blessed name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pastor Flory, leave us in the pledge, please.
Yes, if you'd please stand and face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag-
...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Option of the agenda, or are there any proposed changes?
We have one proposed addition, Mr. Chairman. You have a resolution regarding the funding for Ailer Middle School, which we would propose adding, under Tab D, the Commissioner's refund.
Okay, it would be D2.
D2.
Okay. Request, how would the board like to handle?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Do approve in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, pose no. Consent agenda, are any proposed changes?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
All right, how would we like to handle the consent agenda?
Move for approval.
I still approves, for second.
Second.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, pose no. All right, that will bring us to citizen comments, agenda items that are not subject to public hearing. Did anyone sign up?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, Amber Wallen.
Share your name, magisterial district, and limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Thank you. My name is Amber Wallen, and I'm part of the Opecan District. I want to start by thanking you for seeing the need to replace, not remodel, Ailer. However, I have some concerns and stipulations that have been placed on your proposed resolution. If there are requests, as stated in the originally published draft of the resolution, I am happy that the dialogue is out there and the communication between the Board of Supervisors, School Board, and constituents is happening. However, if there are demands that must be met in order for funding to be provided, I have some serious concerns. I respect the difficulty of the decisions you have to make, and understand that while most of us who speak here have one or two concerns we are hyper-focused on, you have to figure out how to make the big picture happen. To help get you there, you have a team of experts to advise, research, and report their findings. You let other educated people help you educate yourselves to make educated decisions. Except, sometimes it doesn't seem like that's happening when it comes to the schools. We have educated experts from the School Board that you seem to dismiss time and time again. You ladies and gentlemen control the purse strings, but you do not control the schools. You are not an educator, you do not know what is best for our students, except perhaps supervisor. You have a school board, experts in their field that do. They know what environment is best for students to learn in, they know how many kids can fit in spaces and still learn effectively. They know what kind of space schools need to best educate our students. They know how modern education works. But you see dollar signs, square foot, and student capacity without evaluating the relationship and impact one has on the other. These numbers do not occur in a vacuum. There is most definitely a correlation between them. Our children are not to be treated as cattle, stamped and tagged and forced into pasture because you say they will fit. It's preposterous that you see a 140,000-square-foot school being able to serve the same population as a 187,000-square-foot school. It's the same as saying, "We don't need a minivan, we can all fit in this Mini Cooper." I guess technically you all fit, but not effectively or legally. And if you know you are picking up people along the way, why on earth did you not plan ahead and take the minivan? You can either have a building with room to grow and the student capacity you desire, like Frederick County Middle with 187,000 square feet, 900 student capacity, because you gave the School Board a budget of 52 million, or you can stick to the 45.5 million budget currently provided to get a school that fits for right now, with only 140,000 square foot, which is anywhere from 10,000 to 47,000 square feet smaller than every other middle school in the district. That simply will not end up giving you the 900 student capacity you seem desperate to have. If the county can honestly not spare any more than 45.5 million, we are not turning our nose up at it. We will take it gladly, but you have to accept that it is out of your realm of expertise to determine what the budget will provide in school design and student capacity. You have to rely on your educated education experts to advise you about what your financial contribution will do for our students. I think that all of the other requests about VDOT and planning for expansion later and the old Ailer being handled back are practical and helpful. But when it comes to the design and student capacity, you need to listen to what your experts and constituents are repeatedly telling you. You have to decide where to dig your heels in, 45.5 million or student capacity. If you're drawing your line in the sand with capacity, you have to find more money for a larger school. If you're drawing the line in the sand with the 45.5 million, we gratefully accept. But you need to be realistic about the fact that the 140,000 square foot you insist is not going to serve 900 kids. And the addition, one sentence, it's almost done. The addition-
Comments next time, please.
I'm sorry?
Time your comments next time, please.
The addition that you need is going to be knocking on your door before you know it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Sophia Gunthang and Jessica Shostak.
Hello, my name's Sophia.
And my name is Jessica.
We're from the Back Creek District. I'm an eighth-grade student, student council member, band member, dance team member, and an all-A and B honor roll student from Ailer Middle School.
I'm also an eighth-grade student, student council member, band member, and an all-A and B honor roll student from Ailer Middle School. We are here representing the Robert E. Ailer Student Body, amazing staff, and extraordinary teachers. We're here to speak once again about Ailer.
From what we've been hearing from you and others, we are probably rebuilding Ailer. We completely agree with you, but there's one thing I'm very worried about, that's the space. 140,000 square feet is way too small for the amount of kids being sent to Ailer. Because Byrd and James Wood are becoming extremely overpopulated, they have to rezone, and many students that should be going to Byrd and James Wood are coming to Ailer and Frederick County Middle. Ailer needs to be able to take all of those students coming from Byrd, James Wood, and all the new homes.
I know that some of you think that spending the least amount of money to keep taxes low will benefit the county, but if the schools do not have the capacity to hold the number of students from the many families moving in with young children, the schools become overpopulated, like many other schools are now. James Wood Middle School is 150,000 square feet, and Byrd Middle School is 160,000 square feet, which is 20,000 square feet larger than Ailer that you all are planning on building. Both schools can hold 900 kids and are both overpopulated.
Frederick County Middle School is 47,000 square feet larger than Ailer that you were planning on building, which is 140,000 square feet. Frederick County Middle can hold 900 students, but only has 683 students going there. With the students from Byrd, James, and the new families coming sent to Ailer and Frederick County, there might be the perfect amount of students in middle school for the max capacity. But you need to think about the future. With all the new homes comes all the new families and kids. Right now, the amount of students going to middle school and Frederick County Public Schools is 3,212 as of March. The max amount for the school is 3,420.
We don't feel like we are treated unfairly compared to the other schools in the district. The 140,000-square-foot Ailer is going to be smaller than all the other middle schools that are now. Think about how overcrowded the schools are with the square footage they are at. We would like to thank the amazing teachers, they take so much time out of their day to teach these students. They come to school every day to find an unsafe, unwelcoming school. They do not deserve it. We also would like to say a huge thank you to all of the janitors that have been working so hard at Ailer to keep it looking its best. All we ask is that you think for the future. Don't use the bare minimum for something you want to last. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies, well done.
Chris Fordney.
I'm Chris Fordney, the Red Bud representative on the Parks and Rec Commission. I'd like to speak to you and item on your agenda tonight, the plan for low-income apartments behind St. Paul's Church on Sensory Road. I believe this is a good project and the church is to be commended, but I have some concerns. My first concern is that this matter is being handled through an amendment to the comprehensive plan rather than the rezoning that would normally be required to increase the density for this project. I would hope that this procedure is not being used as a way to avoid a discussion of proffers. There are already many new houses being built in eastern Frederick County that are not generating proper money because the rezonings took place so long ago. The board needs to make sure that new developments pay their fair share for new public facilities. My second concern has to do with the pedestrian access for this apartment complex. Mr. Wyatt stated in a previous meeting that the occupants will not be driving very much. That means they will be on foot, which means they will have to sterilize walking on increasingly busy Sensory Road or remain landlocked in this apartment complex. There's undeveloped commercial property adjacent to the church that will include a pedestrian trail at some point. I believe the developer should have some obligation to work with that property owner to get this trail put in now so these residents will have safe access to the Handymart and the Frederick Heights Park to the east. I also think there should be a crosswalk to the Country Store. These kind of goals, walkability and access to park facilities, are prominently enunciated in the urban classification that this project seeks. So let's not just talk the talk on these issues. Let's literally walk the walk by insisting that new developments include these kind of urban amenities in this developing urban area. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Tara Shostak.
Hi, my name's Tara Shostak. I'm from the Back Creek District. I've looked at the Board of Supervisors' resolution that I believe you all are going to vote on tonight, and I've also seen an earlier draft. The earlier draft of the resolution included language that said that the board was requesting that the School Board consider the five items that are listed. And this revised draft makes it sound more like if the School Board doesn't agree with the five things that are listed on the Board of Supervisors' resolution, that they wouldn't even consider, they talk about, y'all talk about considering the appropriation of funds. I'm a little bit concerned about basically the legality of this document and trying to force on the board, the School Board, these five stipulations or the appropriation won't even be discussed. There's case law that clearly states that the Board of Supervisors doesn't have authority over construction of schools once the funds have been appropriated. And my concern is that this is an attempt to kind of wrest control over the construction of the schools from the School Board. The governing body has limited oversight in school expenditures through the budget and appropriations process, but this role has not been interpreted as authorizing the governing body to exercise general control over School Board expenditures. The statutory authority of local school boards to control the construction of public schools and expenditure of funds for that purpose are with the School Board, not with the Board of Supervisors. So I strongly encourage that the language of this resolution be revised to show that it's not a mandate that the School Board follow these five requirements and that it be a suggestion and an opening for discussion. But the way this is worded makes it sound like you all aren't even going to discuss it with the School Board unless they first agree to these five requirements. So I have concerns with this. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the last person signed up.
Is there anyone else who cared to speak on an issue not subject to public hearing? Anyone? Seeing no one, we'll close the public comment portion. Board of Supervisors' comments, are there any?
Mr. Chairman.
Surprised we're done.
We're having a two-way conversation, and I don't know all your names, and you know who we are. But for the first person to spoke here tonight, three of us have taken a day to go out to Brambleton. It's in Loudoun County. We're trying to educate ourselves as well as we can to make-
Supervisor done.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Supervisor Lofton, would you join me?
Sure.
Would the Baker family come forward and join us, please? Thank you. This is the resolution of appreciation honoring the life of Tom Baker. Whereas Tom Baker was born in 1938 in Winchester to the late Mary Sullivan Baker and Charles B. Baker, and graduated in 1956 from Hanley High School, where he was president of his class. And whereas Tom Baker went on to attend Virginia Tech, graduating in 1960 with a degree in electrical engineering, and settled with his wife Sheila in Winchester in 1963. And whereas, under the guidance of Tom and his wife Sheila, Camp Fantastic, serving those children and families affected by cancer, was conceived and funded beginning in 1983. Whereas Tom Baker also co-founded Special Love Incorporated to support and fund future Camp Fantastic events and activities. And whereas the Winchester-Frederick County community greatly benefited from the dedicated efforts and tireless energy of Tom Baker in his many community-based endeavors, including the donation of their home and surrounding land by Tom and his wife to help create the Youth Development Center. Now therefore be it resolved that the Frederick County Board of Supervisors extends its sincerest thanks and appreciation for Tom Baker and honors his life of leadership, dedication, and selfless volunteerism in the community. Adopted this 14th day of February 2018. Please join me in thanking again the Baker family for their huge contributions to our community. That will bring us to committee appointments. Board of Building Appeals, I believe we're still waiting.
That is correct, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Extension Leadership Council, Stonewall.
Yes, sir, I'm happy to report that Mrs. Loving has agreed to serve for a second term and very grateful for that.
Absolutely, she's served with such great distinction.
So I make a motion that we approve for a second term. Is that necessary?
It is. Second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, pose no. Thank you. That will bring us to Historic Resources Advisory Board. I believe we're waiting on that one.
Mr. Chairman, we have spoke with Mr. Perry, and he does not wish to be reappointed due to his schedule, so we are looking for an applicant for the Member-at-Large position.
Right, thank you, sir. Winchester Regional Airport Authority, we have two terms expiring at the end of next month, and so I'd like to leave those for now. And I believe that brings us to the end. Okay. Come with me. That will bring us to requests from the Commissioner for refunds. Supervisor Slaughter. Or-
Mr. Chairman, I've got it.
Mr. Chairman.
We have four refunds this evening. The first being for rider truck rental, 3,382.62 for personal property taxes in 2017 as a result of vehicles being sold or moved out of the county. The second is for Wheels LT, in the amount of 3,905.2 also for personal property tax on vehicles for '16 and '17. These vehicles were moved or sold. Third is undisclosed taxpayer, and this is related to disabled veterans relief. The amount is for 6,670.46 for real estate taxes for the years 2011 through '17. And the final request is from DL Peterson Trust in the amount of 20,286.20 for personal property taxes on vehicles between 2015 and 2017. All of these have been reviewed and have met legal muster.
Thank you, sir. How would the board like to handle these?
Mr. Chairman, I would move for the refund for rider truck rental LT in the amount of 3,382.63. Refund for Wheels LT, amount 3,905.2. Disabled veteran relief, 6,670.46. And DL Peterson Trust, 20,286.20. And the corresponding supplemental appropriation.
Heard the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Supervisor McCarthy.
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn.
Aye.
Supervisor Trout.
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries. That will bring us to the Finance Committee, and I apologize for being ahead of myself. Supervisor Slaughter.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
Oh, excuse me.
We had the addition of the resolution, I'm sorry.
That was, that's right.
I thought we put that, I see.
D1.
We did. So Supervisor Trout.
I want to disclose for the record, relative to this item and pursuant to the State and Local Government Conflict of Interest Act, that I am employed by Frederick County Public Schools as a teacher and therefore am a member of a group who are or may be affected by the item, and that I am able to participate in the transaction fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So this is where we injected the resolution regarding a replacement Ailer. How would the board like to handle this one?
Motion to approve the resolution as stated.
Second.
Motion to approve in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Supervisor Trout abstains or voting?
No voting, aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
As stated, aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor McCarthy?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries. Now Supervisor Slaughter, we'll get to the Finance Committee.
Right. The Finance Committee held their meeting on May 16. Items number one, two, three, and four were approved under consent agenda, and I would make a motion to approve those on consent.
Heard the motion?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
One, two, three.
And four.
And four under consent. Ready? McCarthy?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Trout?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries.
Item number five, the Treasury requested general fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $52,000. This amount represents funds needed for DMV stops for the remainder of the fiscal year. No local funds required as revenue collected has exceeded budgeted revenue. I would make a motion, the committee recommends approval, and I would so move.
First, the motion is there a second?
Second.
Second, is there any discussion? Supervisor McCarthy?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Trout?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries.
Item number six, the Department of Social Services requested general fund budget reduction in the amount of 220,000. Of that amount, 58,875 represents local funds. The reduction represents year-end adjustments to bring the county budget in line with the state budget. The committee recommended approval, and I would so move.
Heard the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Supervisor Trout?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor McCarthy?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries.
And the last item on the agenda, the Department of Social Services requested a general fund budget transfer in the amount of 48,231. The amount represents a transfer out of health, dental, to be used for additional expenses. No additional local funds are required. The committee recommended approval, and I would so move.
Heard the motion, is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Is there any discussion? Supervisor McCarthy?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Trout?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries. All right, Ms. Perkins, that will bring us to public hearing, rezoning 0517. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is a request to amend the proffers associated with rezoning number 03 of 2006, which was approved back in 2008. That application rezone 394 acres to the EM Extractive Manufacturing District with proffers. I can direct you to the screen on your left. Subject property is outlined in black. As you can see here, and for reference, Chapel Road runs through that property in that location. Now, I'm just going to go through the proffers that have changed what was originally proposed with the 2006 proffer versus what is changing. Just to start, for the general provisions, which is the first part of the proffer statement, they're proposing the removal of the overall plan and the four phasing plans. The removal of view shed 4B, 5B, 6, 7, 8, and 9. They're keeping view sheds 1A, 1B, 2, 3, 4A, and 5, and they're adding view sheds 1, 2, and 3. Now for proffer 2, which is the site development, these are the changes to the berm height and landscaping. The approved proffers stated that the berms would be a maximum height of 30 feet and a minimum height of 10 feet based on the 12 view shed plans. Now, the main changes are to berm D, which are proposed with this revision. Now, they've broken berm D into four sections. In those four sections, you have section 1, which is the closest to Western View, section 2, section 3, which is along Chapel, and then section 4. And I'll go through each of those individually. Now, berm D, section 1, is the state of the area near Western View, right here. Now, this was proffered at 30 feet originally. This is proposed to be reduced to 20 feet as well as moved back from the common project line with the subdivision. You have berm D, section 2, which was proffered at 30 feet. Now, this revision shows the 30-foot berm, which is consistent with the approved proffers. However, the proffer statement in your package did state that that berm could be reduced down to 10 feet if it conflicted with the cemetery or the stream. Now, there's berm D, section 3, and berm C. Both of those were proffered at 10 feet, and that's consistent with the approved proffer. And then lastly, again, berm D, section 4, it's a 20-foot proffer, excuse me, 20-foot berm, which is consistent with the approved proffer. Now, continue with proffer 2, site development, the berm timing. Berms C and D from the original Phase 2 were to be installed no later than 10 years prior to the commencement of mining north of Chapel Road. Now, this amendment would state that berm C and D would be installed after permitting and two years prior to the extraction of material for processing. Now, the other section of proffer 2 is the landscaping portion of the site development. They are proposing to remove Exhibit 3, which described the plants to be installed on the berms. And the approved proffer states that a mix of deciduous and coniferous plantings placed in a random manner to be consistent with the existing vegetation. And the proffer adds to that that the plantings will include a seed mix recommended by the National Park Service that is currently in use at the adjacent Cedar Creek and Belgrove National Historic Park. Now, a note with some of those changes, the landscaping originally would have been installed on the berm 10 years prior to commencement of mining. So now that's reduced down to two years for the timeframe to establish the plantings on the berms. Now, some of the other revisions proposed in this, first, the soil piles cannot exceed the height of the highest berm north of Chapel. There's no extraction of materials outside of the berms. The field between berm D, section 1, and the Western View development would not be used for parking or storage of mining equipment or any vehicles and/or equipment shall be staged in this area only while they are engaged in maintenance, monitoring, and/or exploration activities. Hours of operation shown in your agenda, 5:00 AM to 11:00 PM. However, there is an option in there upon notifying the neighbors that they could modify those based on natural events or production demands. There's also a blasting notification provision, a stationary seismograph north of Chapel. They are proposing to remove the proffers for rights to water supply and reclamation that were in there, as well as a lighting proffer stating it would be turned off after working hours. as well as a lighting proffer stating it would be turned off after working hours. Now, while not proposed for a change, I just wanted to do a site access clarification because I've heard some comments and some questions about the Chapel Road access. Now, staff would note that the approved proffer from the 2006 statement states access via public secondary road shall be limited to the quarry entrance on McCune Road. Proffer 2.1 prohibits access to Chapel Road for quarry operations. The proffer GDP, I would note, also shows a proposed tunnel that could be used for access under Chapel Road, but direct site access to Chapel for quarry operations is prohibited by proffer. And just for the, where this has been, the planning commission public hearing was back on November 15th. They proposed, postponed that for 90 days. It came back to them in February where they did recommend denial. It came before the board at your March 14th meeting and your April 25th meeting. With that, I would be glad to answer any questions. We are seeking a decision from the board on this amendment, and the applicant here is here to give a presentation as well. Thank you.
Questions, Ms. Perkins, anyone?
I do have one comment.
Supervisor Lofton?
I know that's the 12th hour, not the 11th hour, but you did receive some further revisions to the-
My apologies. I did pass out the proffer amendment that we received this afternoon. We didn't really get a chance to go through them in depth. The applicant will be able to go through the points that they have changed.
Other questions, Ms. Perkins, anyone? Thank you, ma'am. All right. Who wants to start?
Thank you. My name is George McCottch, Carmuse Lyman Stone Area Operations Manager. Ladies and gentlemen, members of the board, as mentioned previously, I served in the mining industry for 40 years. First and foremost, we want to thank the board for your patience to allow for further discussions with our neighbors. I send a special appreciation to Supervisors Lofton and Dunn for reaching out and working with our community and by having, in addition to our meetings, numerous meetings with our neighbors. I also want to thank both supervisors for taking the time from their busy schedules and, and visiting our property to take a look not only the area north of Chapel, but our operations and our facilities. Folks, we started this process, when we started this process, Carmuse truly thought it was proposing something that was better and less impactful than what had been approved with the rezoning back in 2008. Carmuse certainly understands and appreciates the time that this proffer amendment has consumed and how valuable time is to all of us. With that said, I want to simply state, this vote comes down tonight to one of two outcomes. The first is leaving the rezoning and the proffers as they are and as approved in 2008. And the other is to approve the proffers as have been amended and as are before you this evening. I will say, Michael will address, there has been some last-minute changes. So what was up earlier does not represent the latest, greatest version. There's a choice before you tonight, to approve or not to approve this proffer amendment. We understand the concerns that's been voiced by our neighbors, and we believe we have addressed them. Throughout this process, Carmuse's only objective has been to lessen and soften the impact of mining activity to our neighbors by delaying and placing activities further from the homes we thought and continue to think to be a good thing and nothing more. To recap, we have met with the community on multiple occasions, just like any business, we want to partner with our neighbors. And we believe we have examples like volunteering for Cedar Creek reenactment events, supplying free stone, supporting efforts to build little league fields, and the annual scholarship at the local high school. Having said that, we're here tonight, no more funny business or last-minute spin. I want to be clear and on the record, items like the water and the access are ordinance and not for debate. We are not altering anything, and that's not a part of this proffer amendment. At this time, I would like to request Michael to the podium for his presentation. Again, we will be happy to listen and address further comments after the presentation. Michael, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Michael Wilmeth. I'm a production manager for Carmuse Lyman Stone. In your packet this evening, you should have a copy of the amended proffer statement as well as a summary outlining the major changes provided by staff, showing the multiple revisions of the proffer amendment going all the way back to 2017. We heard Ms. Perkins speak to most of those, and we'll cover those as well as the, the edits that Mr. Lofton was referring to. Tonight, in the presentation, I'd like to walk through those edits that have made since the, that have been made since the last board meeting. If you'll direct your attention here to your left. Many of you have probably seen this, this slide before. It's an aerial image showing the original locations of the berms as well as the proposed changes. The orange berm sections are what the original 2008 proffers describe. For reference, here's the Western View neighborhood. Chapel Road runs along the south to here. The green is what we call berm C, or is what is labeled as berm C. That has not been on previous slides, but thought it important to, to point out that it does still exist and will still be constructed. The area in magenta or purple here is the proposed location for the berm, detailing the latest heights for the varying sections that you heard Ms. Perkins describe. There's four different sections broken out, 1, 2, 3, and 4. One thing to note, the original berm locations, this is the property line here. It's an existing fence line. This berm, the toe of it, is approximately 100 feet off of that property line. The proposed location backs the, what is called section 1, behind an existing tree line, and is approximately 800 feet away from that property line. To put that into a little bit better perspective, this was an image that I took from, from one of the, one of our neighbor's backyard standing by his gazebo in 2016 when we started this process. The vegetation that you can see here is the property line, and we superimposed what that 30-foot berm would look like if you were to stand on his back deck. The image in the bottom is what that berm would look like if we were to implement the promote, proposed amendment, which moves that berm behind that existing tree line, which is here of Cedars, and reduce it in height to 20 feet. It completely disappears behind the tree line. Summary of changes, so these are the major changes that have been made through the eight revisions going back to 2017. And again, you heard Ms. Perkins talk through most of them. Berm D was subdivided into four different sections. Originally, it was all one height. Through meeting with our neighbors and having community meetings, we got feedback that different folks on different sides of the berms would like different heights. So we broke that berm into different sections, into four different sections of varying heights, ranging from the 10 feet all the way up to 30 feet. The tree line, moving the berm, section 1 behind the tree line, there was a concern that that tree line could get taken out at some point in the, in the future. We've added language that would preserve up to 60 feet of a minimum of that tree line. The tree line that stands itself is about 90 to 100 feet thick now. So a minimum of 60 feet of that tree line would be, be preserved. Timing for berm C was originally struck from, it was tied to berm D and was originally struck. We've added language back in that berm C will be constructed similarly to berm D, which is two years after permitting and prior to the extraction of material for processing. And then activities in the field, that was a, a point of, of concern, was what could happen in that field if we back up in this field here, if we were to move this berm behind this tree line, what activities could take place in that, in that field? So we have added language that the only thing that can take place is maintenance, periodic maintenance, if we were to have to drive a pickup around and, and check the berm or the vegetation, monitoring, so seismic monitoring or monitoring wells and exploration. So if we were to need to bring in a core drill or something of that nature. Section 2.4, language was added about notifying neighbors 48 hours in advance if we were to have to change our normal operating hours. If we were to have to go outside of our norm, that we would give the neighbors a 48-hour notification that we would have to work an additional time period. Section 4.1, monitoring wells, so there's three monitoring wells in the current generalized development plan. At a minimum, one of those would be installed six months after the approval of the proffer amendment. Section 6.1, based on neighbor feedback, notification, it was a, a request from our neighbors that on days that we blast, any and all blasting, that we give notification to those who request it within the 1,500-foot ring. It's approximately 85 homes. If all 85 folks request it, then we would give notification to all 85 folks prior to blasting, whether it be through telephone, email, text message. Section 8.1, language was added regarding seismographs, about putting in a stationary or a permanent seismograph at a strategic location. It was further defined that that would be placed, its location would be defined in coordination with a licensed professional engineer that was familiar with, with seismic monitoring. Section 10.1 refers to lighting. We added additional language about that any and all lighting will be turned off after working hours in an area north of Chapel Road. And then finally, section 12.2, we added language regarding that tree line or that fence line that it would need to be maintained using best management or farm practices. We currently lease that field out to a farmer who raises hay on that field, and we don't want him to lose the ability that if he were to have to trim a, trim a cedar tree or something back, that he would still have that flexibility. The last slide that I have for you tonight are the, are the final edits that Supervisor Lofton was referring to, the latest and greatest, as George put it. So most of these pertain to section 2.2, which is site development. So there was a section, or section 2 of berm D, which is the area, and forgive me, I'm going to scroll backwards so that you get an idea. So section 2 is on this side of the property, which is at 30 feet. Originally, there was language that stated that that berm would be built at 30 feet unless it were to encroach on a cemetery, which is located right here. And then there's a stream that runs right through this tree line. So it would be built at 30 feet unless it were to encroach on one of those two. And then it would be built at the maximum height possible. We've struck that language. So it simply states now that that berm will be built to 30 feet. And that's the second bullet point as well. The third bullet point, adding specific language about the plantings. Currently, it states that the plantings would be planted in a random manner to make it look natural. There was a, a question or a concern that was brought up and to add specific language describing plantings consistent with what's in the Frederick County ordinance. So talking about planting densities, size of the trees, whether it's a sapling or how big the diameter is of the trunk that when we planted. Last on 2.2 was eliminating the term, the word long-term. In that field, it stated that we could not use that field for long-term parking, and that, that, that section of long-term has been struck from that. It now says that it can't be used for a parking or storage. And then lastly, on section 2.4, I believe Ms. Perkins had it on the screen earlier, is 5:00 AM to 11:00 PM. That is changed to 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And that's all I had, so thank you for your time, and we look forward to your vote. Unless you have any questions.
Are there any questions?
I do have one question. When, when you talk about the change in normal operating hours, there were provisions in the first packet of information that we received that unless the demand changed, like what constitutes excessive customer demand? So has that been taken out of the, what we were handed this evening?
No, ma'am.
That is still there?
That is still there.
Excuse me, ma'am, excuse me. Ma'am, I can address that. That is a hot-button topic, and I'm here tonight. I'm understanding that changes can be made up to and including tonight. So with that being said, if I see a clear path tonight, I'm willing to take that language off the proffer amendment and just leave it, state that our normal operating hours are from 6:00 to 10:00 PM. There'll be no restrictions.
That's helpful.
Mr. McCottch?
Yes, sir.
May, may I get you to further refine that? 6 to, 6:00 AM, 10:00 PM, Monday through Friday?
Yes.
No major holidays?
I will cite it for you, sir. As soon as I find it. Normal hours of operation for the portion of property north of Chapel Road shall be 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, Monday through Friday. No operation shall take place on any major holiday.
Thank you.
The remainder of that paragraph will be stricken.
Questions, anyone?
I'm assuming lighting will go hand in hand with-
Lighting will go hand in hand. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Is this the time to address the closing or after comments?
We, it's, a public hearing is still open.
Okay.
If, we're happy to hear anything that you all would like to present, and we'll give you an opportunity to address the comments you may hear in the public hearing. So if you have other things, or if you want to wait until that period, it's up to you.
I'll wait, thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to comment concerning rezoning application 05-17? If there is, if you'd come forward, share your name, magisterial district, and try to limit your comments to three minutes or less, please, sir.
My name's Richard Dye. I own 65 acres.
Pull, pull up, Mike. There you go. I own 65 acres adjacent to the Carmuse property, and I share a boundary with them of over 4,000 feet. And over 1,000 feet of it is the center of Middle Marsh Brook. It's on the southeast side of their property, and I have been asking for specific language about the berm being 30 feet high. I wanted it to be 30 feet high like they agreed to 10 years ago. And tonight, they've said that this qualifying language has been removed, which I think that's a good thing. However, I have always asked that it be built 10 years in advance like they agreed to in '08. At that time, it was presented that building the berms 10 years in advance and planting trees and vegetation allows more time for the trees to grow, and this is a good thing. I don't understand why that's no longer a good thing. I still support building the berm 10 years in advance, planting the trees 10 years in advance, and allowing time to grow in. I have seen this in my neighborhood. New development gets built near me, they plant trees, they're now 40 feet high. This is a good thing. I, please consider why 10 years of time for the trees to grow in was a good thing then, but it is no longer a good thing. I, I ask you to, to support the requirement for 10 years in advance for the trees to grow. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Is this your iPad up here? No, that's yours? Okay.
There you go. Thank you.
I'm Robin Young, Back Creek property owner and a granddaughter of a coal miner who knows a thing or two about the honor of minor companies. I'm also the niece of an uncle who fought with Patton in Belgium. And so I'm glad to see that there's a little less pushing around of the Americans who liberated Belgium in World War II going on tonight. Onto my specific remarks, I want to thank the board for the four-week extension that they gave to the neighbors. The time was well-used to educate the neighbors, to research the science behind sound and blast waves and particulate distribution, and to educate the homeowners that some of the numbers the quarry gave us were misleading. Dozens of signed petitions were passed into you requesting 30-foot berms and activating the proffer offers of well and engineering studies. The present version of the proffer is a partial improvement as it exceeds to some requests we've been making for six months. However, I still think there's some- However, I still think there's some confusion, there's an internal conflict between section 2.2 and 12.2 on the wording of the tree line. They contradict each other, as they're currently written. And if the current tree line is 100 feet, and they're preserving it at 60 feet, that is a 40% reduction in the tree line, which is something the neighbors have fought. I think we need to resolve those two sections of language and determine which they really mean. And I'm hoping that they really mean the present 100 feet. If one dead tree has to be cut down, that's neither here nor there. You cut out 40 feet of trees, that makes a difference. When I stood before you last time, I was a messenger from Cliff Balderson at VDOT requesting you to invite them to comment. That has not happened. I must editorialize here that as a transplanted Californian, I'm well aware that Caltrans would have been involved, not as an afterthought, but right up front in planning the physical layout of major developments. I find it really odd that when I built my house in Frederick County, I had to buy a permit from VDOT to locate where my driveway intersects with the street, and they control that connection in a major way. But on a major development like this, they have no role up front. So I ask you more directly this time, if you will agree together, before the night is over, to call them in as part of your resolution. We need to know where the quarry outlets will intersect a winding Chapel Road. So perhaps a two-week delay to consult with VDOT would pay great benefits. Thank you for your time. I will reserve my remaining time for later.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Kristin Lees. I'm the executive director at Belgrove Plantation. It's operated by Belgrove Incorporated, which is a nonprofit organization, and the property is owned by the National Trust for Historic Preservation. I sent a letter earlier this week that I hope you all received in your packets. And we just, we are very appreciative of the Board of Supervisors for encouraging community conversation. We're extremely glad that we've had an open dialogue for many years, both with Belgrove and the National Trust, but also the national parks, Cedar Creek and Belgrove National Historical Park, with representatives of Carmuse. As they've stated before, they have worked to be good communicators and to be good neighbors. However, although we are very pleased to see that these proffers have been expanded and have begun to address the concerns of the neighbors, since it is actionable by law, we felt that Belgrove's historic resources also needed to be protected and written into the proffers and be actionable by law. And that would include pre-blast surveys of our historic structures. We've made significant investments in the restoration and preservation of those structures in the past year, and we're about to embark on a $1.1 million improvement to our property. So feeling the blasts are a very big concern to us, and if a seismograph is going to be installed north of Chapel Road, we would respectfully ask that one be installed on our historic property as well. So I'd happy to answer any questions you would have.
I'm sorry, we can't do that one.
Oh, okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name's Kevin Barrington. I live in the Back Creek District. I'm going to, again, restate what I've said, I don't know how many times since we've been coming here, that there's nothing that makes sense about this whole rezoning bit. And for us, to ask us to get behind this new revised proffers or any proffers that they give us is like asking us to choose what depth we want. Do we want it fast, or do we want it slow? That's the way I equate it. And looking through their newly revised stuff about the seismic stuff, I'm a little disheartened by the fact, because I have told them at numerous occasions about how much my house rocks from the blasting that's two miles away right now. And I'm a little disheartened by the fact that they get to choose, or a licensed professional gets to choose where that seismic monitor goes. I think, honestly, if you ask them, I think they're afraid to come on my property and put it there, because I think the ratings would be off the charts. I have got some existing damage right now that I'm in the process of trying to get fixed. So, but that's neither here nor there. So I just ask you guys to keep in consideration that you saw the timeframes in which they can work. I was a public servant for 27 years, as a police officer in Fairfax County, and we would go to calls of noise ordinance violations that are going to be less noisy than what we're going to have to deal with at 10 o'clock at night. So I ask you, just because of where we live and where it's zoned, should we have to still put up with that stuff at 10 o'clock at night? If it is approved, or when it's approved, or what have you, I just want to let you know, I'm going to be the one that's going to carry the banner, carry the flag, and try to get some new legislation in the county to, you know, for noise ordinance, for us to be covered in that noise ordinance policy that you guys have in effect right now. It needs to be changed, it needs to protect us. This doesn't protect us at all. So I thank you for your time, and I too await your decision. Thank you much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yes?
Can I come back?
Well, let's make sure we don't have anyone else, and we certainly will do that. Anyone else like to comment? Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Keon Banks, and I'm in the Back Creek District. I want to appreciate, I want to say, I appreciate you guys as taking the time to let us have the last few months to negotiate and work with these guys. I believe George, I believe he's an honest guy who is trying to work with us as best as he can. He's serving two masters, and that's not an easy chore. I also want to appreciate Mr. Dunn, Mr. Lofton, for working on negotiations for us and for Carmuse to get us to a place that seems like it's going to be working. I know that they turned in language earlier in the week that we read over and looked at and said, "Ooh, not so beautiful." And I hear that the language is going to change. And with that change of language, I think we've come a long way. But I, turning in that language in the 12th hour, I still haven't been able to read it and see if the language matches what's been said. And I know we've had issues in the past with the language not matching what we're working with. And so I'm hoping that if there's going to be a vote tonight, if we could delay it for two weeks so the people can read that language that has been changed at the last minute, I do believe, at this point in time, they are going to, that wording will be in there, and it will be an agreement that we can all make our best with. And again, I thank you guys, and I thank these guys. They are, we have made a lot of headway, and I think that's huge. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
My name is Ed Stroyn. I live on Western View Drive in the Back Creek District. And again, I want to add my thanks to all of you to allow the discussions to have taken place over the last couple of months and weeks. I have not seen the final edits, except for tonight. They're an improvement over the previous iteration that was passed around at the beginning of the week. In my mind, all of these changes, including the final ones, are infinitely better than the original 2008 proffers. If by waiting another week or two to smooth out language, close up ambiguities, and so forth, at this point, two weeks is two weeks. You know, let's spend another two weeks and clear up everything so that all of us can feel that it's the best of a bad circumstance. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to speak? Anyone at all? Last call. Yes, ma'am.
So Robin Young, Back Creek. Finishing up on VDOT quickly, I wanted to add that I think at this point, we especially need VDOT more than ever, because in the current proffer, kind of sliding by, is a line that says they reserve the right to light any of their equipment at night. And we know there's talk of an overhead conveyor belt crossing chapel arially, and that would be lit under this proffer. And that's never been discussed, which is something we need to take a bit of a look at. I'm also, when I'm done here, I'm going to hand the clerk of the board a page from the Carmuse website, which is titled "Neighbor Relationships." And in this, they talk about how in Belgium, they insulate the rock crushers to minimize the noise to the neighboring community. That has not been offered to us, nor discussed. And so if insulation is good enough for Belgium, it should be good enough for Frederick County. So I would ask that at some point, somebody at the county ask them about that. I next want to mention briefly the seismographs and the petitions. The petitions we gave you asked for 30 seismographs. Now, that is a bit excessive. I do think we could probably compromise on something less, but Carmuse offered one. They knew the petitions were out there, they offered one. It's a decidedly puny counteroffer, and it's really not acceptable. The miles of terrain over which the quarry stretches contains different subsoil conditions. Folded limestone will react differently than acid shale beds, alluvial soils, and floodplains. They really need to put a seismograph in each one of those geologic formations. I think we could compromise on four. Belgrove is on the plain, they could have one, one on Western View, where the shaking has been extreme at four miles away from the quarry, one on a ridge zone like Chimney Hills, and one in the Great Bowl, that kind of sits below the Kiesak's house, and there's a whole bunch of houses perched on the rim of that bowl. That would be solid scientific information with seismographs. So I would suggest that. I'm also very pleased at the removal of what I consider the poison pill, the 5:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. hours, which would have made that neighborhood be like living in a special army base, a special forces army base. So I think that's a great improvement, very pleased by that tonight. Again, thanks to Supervisor Lofton and Supervisor Dunn for all the footwork. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else like a second opportunity? All right, we'll close the public comment portion. Gentlemen, if you'd like to respond to any of the comments you've heard, you're welcome to.
Yes, sir. First and foremost, regarding the berm question in question at the, first gentleman speaking, that berm is at a 30-foot height. It is proffered, we can pull that up. Secondly, the conflict with the tree line, that tree line is remaining at its original, and that is in the proffers as well. With respect to Belgrove, there is a current seismograph next door to Belgrove, a permanent one. This can also address the most recent comment about having 30 seismographs. That's redundancy. That would be like putting a seismograph between each one of us here. So with that being said, there's one at Belgrove. DMVE will require us to have one at the nearest dwelling, and we are offering a stationary one. So there'll be three in this area. And finally, I'd like to also address the hours of operation and the two-week delay. We've kicked this can down the road long enough. This is all on public record. I have stated to you, it's not more than 20 minutes ago, that I will remove that language. That language will be removed. Having said that, in closing, folks, like many of you, we are business associates. We feel this is our best outcome and opportunity for all. We provide jobs and income for many, and more importantly, we provide a lifestyle. Just a couple of notes to leave with you tonight. Most of you, if not all, drove here tonight in your car or truck. Did you know that there's 100 pounds of our material in your car? Each and every car on the road requires 100 pounds of our material. On a more personal note, last week, we had an employee celebrate 50 years, 50-year anniversary at our Middletown operation. That's quite an accomplishment. We would like nothing more than to have more employees celebrate anniversaries with Carmuse. Thank you. We look forward to your vote, and we will respect the outcome. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank everyone for coming out tonight and sharing your views. And thank Carmuse for coming out and actually working up to the 12th hour to help get this as possibly close as we can. And I think, I actually think, I don't know what other refinements we could make that would make a huge difference, or even a small difference in this. For the sake of discussion, let me make a motion to approve the proffer amendments as submitted as of this afternoon for the Carmuse Owen Minerals Company. Again, as the amended proffers, as stated today, the latest version of today, I move for approval of that.
Only on the proffer? You're not speaking to the request?
I'm sorry.
You're not speaking to the request, but only the proffer statement?
For the request, yes.
You're moving for approval of rezoning 05-17?
Yeah.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
The rezoning with the amended proffers, yes.
So you've heard the motion, is there a second?
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman. I'll second it for the purpose of discussion.
All right, we have a second. It's time for discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm completely uncomfortable with voting on this tonight as it stands, mostly because of what some of the constituents stated, that I just received the amended proffers when I walked in here this evening, and I think this affects way too many families for me to vote on it right now. So I would not support your motion, Mr. Lofton, and I would actually make my own motion, can I do that, to postpone it until June 13th?
No, not while there's another motion. You can offer an amendment to postpone.
Sure, then I'll offer an amendment to Mr. Lofton's motion to postpone this vote until June the 13th, so that the citizens can have a chance to review the proffers as well.
And do you intend to keep the public hearing open as part of that motion?
Yes.
Thank you. Heard the motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
The second by Supervisor Slaughter. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Perkins laid out what was given to you in your packet. Mr. McCott explained those refinements to the arguments against that latest proffer amendment. I don't know, in my mind, certainly, I don't think that we need to postpone this one more time. It's either yes or no tonight. That's what I'd like to see. We worked, and I will give credit to Mr. McCott and his co-staff there, that I have not asked for anything, that I have not been given, that, yes, there are times we have disagreed, and there are still times, still things that we might just have a slight disagreement on. But they have been very forthcoming with me. If they couldn't give me an answer, if it had to come from a higher level in the corporation, they did that, they get back to me. We have made, and I think, some great concessions here. I don't know that we'll get it any closer, and I really don't think people want to go back to the 2008 proffers. So I would vote against the delay.
All right, further discussion on the proposed delay?
Mr. Chairman, in response to Supervisor Lofton's remarks, I am very grateful for the time and the effort that both you and Supervisor Dunn have put into the time and the effort that both you and Supervisor Dunn have put into this. But it gives me pause to receive something when I walk in here that evening and not have a chance to thoroughly read it, and to also give the residents an opportunity to make sure that it fulfills. It sounds like you've made great strides. I really and truly like the fact that there is a smaller footprint in all of this, and it seems to be a more workable improvement. However, I do think it's important that we do have an opportunity to read and digest it, and for, I know in our packets, we've seen redlined remarks of those revisions by the county attorney. So for me to feel comfortable with it, and again, I am not taking anything away from all of your hard work, and I know you have tirelessly worked to try to get us to this point, as has Supervisor Dunn, so I'm most appreciative of that.
Okay, further discussion on the proposed amendment. Anyone?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Lofton.
Does the applicant have any say in whether or not this post-pollution may go through?
No, sir.
Okay.
May I address one more time?
No, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Are you ready?
Yes.
Supervisor Slaughter.
There have been comments this evening about the VDOT issue, and I guess as has been customarily received, we have received VDOT comments, so I don't know if there's any clarification that anyone could offer as to why we haven't received VDOT comments.
I'm sorry, the what?
The VDOT comments. There have been a couple of issues raised about VDOT comments, and I know, as is typical with that, with a zoning of some sort, we do have that preview.
Right. With this rezoning, since the proffer amendments didn't pertain to any of the previously proffered VDOT commitments, typically when VDOT's not being impacted with the revision, we don't seek additional comments, because all the commitments from the 2006 to now have not changed.
Very well, thank you.
If I may.
Surely.
To follow up on that, I actually contacted VDOT. Obviously, Chapel Road cannot be used for any type of commercial use hauling rock in or out of that quarry area on either side, north or south. The VDOT will allow them, when they're building the berms, to cross Chapel Road only a certain number of times. They're not going to give them carte blanche that they can keep doing that forever. And that they would, like I say, there is a tunnel proposed, they would actually consider a conveyor system, and according to Mr. Ingram, that would probably be the way they would want them to go. But that decision is not going to be made now until actually Carmuse says that's what we would like to do. So again, VDOT, there's not a whole lot that they're saying, except you're not going to use Chapel Road for any kind of commercial hauling. You can cross the road a certain number of times, or rather, a certain time period to get that work done, but then that's it.
Thank you.
Further discussion on the proposed amendment, anyone? Supervisor Dunn.
Mr. Chairman and fellow board members, Mr. McCott and his team have been extremely helpful, reasonable, and tried to work with the community. I think he's a reasonable gentleman, has tried to reasonably solve a very difficult The revised proffer is something that I like. My concern is on the items that were eliminated, and that's the problem that I'm wrestling with. And there's a disagreement among attorneys on whether that, on the effect of that elimination. So if this proffer had simply been the reduced footprint as outlined on the boards, with the other revisions here, none of which are perfect, I think it's a improvement. For those that are concerned on berms, the 20-foot berms behind, within approximately a year, Carmuse will be down another 15 feet, so now you have 20-foot berms and 15 feet down, so you have a 35-foot situation. Mr. McCott has said verbally that if they eliminated trees, they would go and plant those trees. I appreciate those comments, they were never to try to work with people. And if this proposal simply dealt with the berms and did not eliminate anything else, it would be a much easier vote. So I think Mr. McCott is doing the, as somebody else said, he has two masters. I really appreciate the work that you've put into this. I appreciate the time you gave me, I appreciate the time we spent. I will tell you right now, this is a difficult vote, and for all of you listening, because of current proffer law, it is very difficult to have a discussion the way normal people would have, and that makes this a reason why this proffer law, also in my opinion, should be revised by the General Assembly. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Further discussion, anyone?
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Supervisor Lofton.
To the point of being redundant, I received a list from several people of 11 items that they would like to see addressed. And again, Mr. Dunn, myself, and Mr. McCott and his staff have worked, and I'd like to kind of go through these. Number one, all 2008 proffers regarding planted vegetation remain the same, enable watering care. They've actually gone above and beyond that. They're actually adding plants in addition to the plantings that are required by Arizona zoning code. So I think that's a plus. They leave the natural tree buffer along Western View. As we've heard, they're going to leave 60% of that tree buffer along Western View, which I think is a huge.
Or plant more.
The limit of hours of operation to daytime shift north of Chapel, we got very close to that, as you heard Commissioner McCott say, they're willing to say they're going to limit the hours Monday through Friday, no major holidays, no rock crushers or processing of any kind. There's not going to be any processing north of Chapel Road, that's all extraction and moving the material to the south where it will be processed. All overburden, all quarry operations must be contained within established berms that's in here. There's no parking outside of the berms. The only time they can be outside those berms is when they're doing maintenance, or some exploratory drilling for some reason, or some other type of activity that has to be done and finished. They can't park it out there on, they just can't park it out there. All overburden piles, waste rates shall be no higher than the berms that's in here. All lighting should be mounted below berms and pointed down. The lighting is in here. There's actually going to turn the lighting off after work hours, which was not in there before. Permanent seismograph readers shall be immediately installed for homes that request them. I've talked with people who have expertise in this area, and they tell me that that's a fallacy, really, because you could have seismic gas in front of two houses, one might show some activity, and the other might not show any activity. So then you're arguing, well, something happened to my house, and I can prove it because there was activity on my neighbors. So they're offering beyond what they have to offer, according to the Mines and Minerals, Department of Mines, Minerals, and Energy. The three wells, immediately installed, they're going to install the three wells that stays in there, and they will have one well that will be installed within six months if these proper amendments are approved. The building of the berms should be completed two years before mining starts north of Chapel. That's it. And they want a new, smaller footprint. The 30-foot berm on the east side is 30-foot berm. It doesn't say, we're going to adjust the height, we can't meet the cemetery, or the stream, or anything else. That's a 30-foot berm. So, and if, one more thing that Mr. McCott did not bring up, that I think is a plus, but it's not in the proffers, and this has been discussed with several homeowners, if the berms do not protect the view shed of the homes, trees will be planted, if requested, on the homeowner's property that will screen the operations from that property. So that was not in the proffers, but that is something that Carmuse has offered to do. If this is approved, they will send out letters to all whose view shed might be affected by that. So even the petitions that we've seen have not greatly deviated from this, and I'm not taking either side here. I'd like for the residents to be as protected as possible, while allowing Carmuse as much flexibility as they can to continue to be a tax-paying organization in this county. So that's why I will vote against. It's time we make a decision. I will vote against the post-pollution.
Further discussion, Supervisor McCarthy.
Mr. Chairman, I've been sitting and listening. I was really hopeful that when we tabled this back in March, that we'd be sitting here tonight making a decision one way or the other. I'm disappointed that we're not. I understand why we're not, though, and I appreciate all the hard work that's gone into the development of the compromises that have been put before us tonight. Unfortunately, the last proffer amendment was done, or the revision was done, March 2nd. If you look on this amended proffer statement, the latest one was May 23rd, which we're sitting in May 23rd right now. And I think it's unreasonable to expect any legislator of any level of government to be handed something five minutes before they're asked to vote on it with no time to read or consider it. I think it sort of flies in the face of having a public comment period if the public hasn't had a chance to even see the document that they're going to be commenting on. It's unfortunate, I was really hoping we could put this to bed tonight, but I think out of fairness and due process, I'm going to support Shannon's amended motion.
Supervisor Slaughter.
Just one last comment, and that was in regard to the letter that we also received at our stations this evening from Belgrove. And that was in regard to proffer 8.1 about conducting pre-blast surveys at Belgrove. Is that a part? Because I'm not sure that it specifically addresses anything beyond the residents, this proffer amendment.
As I understand it, that's ongoing now, right?
Right.
Okay.
This is board discussion.
And also the request for notification for blasting, that is an ongoing, they would be a part of the notification for blasting as well? The blasting and the pre-blast surveys?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, that's one thing I did omit from my comments, is number 11, they wanted set times for blasting, but the way the proffers are written now, that any homeowner can notify Carmuse to allow them to contact them in a timely manner as to when the next blast is going to be, and that is by text message, email, phone call, whatever method you choose to have. Carmuse has agreed in the proffers to set up a system, will notify you before any blasting takes place. The set times for blasting were hard to do, because that could depend upon the weather and so many other factors, so it can't be a set time for the blasting, and I understand that. But you will be notified prior to any blast, if you so choose, and you contact Carmuse, and it will be done with your preferred method.
All right, further discussion, anyone?
One other comment, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Dunn.
As I said earlier, I think this is a improved proffer. And the one thing I'm struggling with is that certain sections of the previous proffer were deleted. And if those items were left in, even though there may be another set of paperwork that in some opinion may negate that, would make it a non-issue. And so that's the issue that is difficult. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Anyone at all? We're voting on the amended motion to delay to the 13th of June and holding the public hearing open until that time. Supervisor McCarthy.
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
No.
Supervisor Dunn.
Aye.
Supervisor Trout.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. This discussion will be delayed until our 6/13/18 meeting, and the public hearing will remain open. We thank you all for all your hard work. That will bring us to a discussion on St. Paul's on the Hill Comp Plan Amendment. Ms. Perkins.
Again, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is a requested amendment to the Sensi Eastern Frederick Urban Area Plan of the 2035 Comprehensive Plan. Now, this is a 4.9-acre property located at 1527 Sensi Road. Now, the current zoning of this property is RP Residential Performance, and is located within the Sewer Water Service area and the urban development area. Now, the comprehensive plan currently shows this property with an institutional land use. Now, that land use is reflective of the current church on the property, and that area adjacent to it is a school, so that also has the institutional land use. The site is also surrounded by residential and the Greenwood Urban Center, and they are seeking, as I stated, to amend the comp plan from institutional to urban center. If I can direct you to the screen on your left, subject property is outlined in black in this location, and you have Sensi Road. And that yellow is all of the existing RP residential, and the pink is a B1 Neighborhood Business District. And this is just a snapshot of the existing comprehensive plan that shows the current planned land use. You have this area here, which is the institutional, and this yellow hatched area is residential. Then you have the existing limits of the urban center, which is the little circles, which are across Sensi Road, as well as adjacent in this little flag area here. Now, this is the land use that they are requesting, they are seeking to move that urban center to cover their property. And I know this is a lot of colors up there, but this is just to show where the limits of the Greenwood Urban Center are. You have Sensi Road in this location, and this is that core Greenwood area, and that subject property is located here. Now, as I stated, the subject property is currently zoned RP Residential Performance. The current buyright density of that site, if developed with a townhouse or garden apartment type use, would be 10 units per acre. So with the 4.9 acres, that would be 49 buyright units. The expansion of the urban center designation to the property would double the buyright density, because of the housing type, high-density residential allows for 20 units an acre if you're in a neighborhood center or an urban village. So that would take the property from 10 to 20 for multifamily. So the density would be increased as a buyright use allowance. It would not require rezoning to address any impacts. So potentially, you could have an increase of 50 units with the doubling of the density. Now, just a side note, the site does have some development constraints, such as the riparian buffer and zoning district buffers that we acquired, which could potentially limit the density. And we would note that the applicant is currently seeking some ordinance amendments that would provide relief to the constraints, to help with the density they are seeking. That's just a side note, that would come later under the ordinance committee. So background, this was discussed at the Comprehensive Plans and Programs Committee at their April 2018 meeting. They supported the request and sent it to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission discussed this at their May 2nd meeting, and also supported the amendment and sent it forward to the board. So tonight, we are seeking a decision from the board on whether this is ready to be sent forward to public hearing. I'll be glad to answer any questions, and Mr. Evan White with Greenway Engineering is here on behalf of the applicant.
Questions, Ms. Perkins, anyone? Supervisor McCarthy.
Ms. Perkins, this has been presented to, I believe, the Planning Commissioning to us as a community that will be developed for 55 and better senior-type-of-living community. Would this type of approval to an amendment to the plan guarantee that that's the type of use it would be for, or could it be also byright use for other constituencies?
With this, there wouldn't be a county regulation for the use of the property, so it could be age-restricted, it could be open to all ages. That's not something that would be covered under a comprehensive plan amendment.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Supervisor Lofton.
Couple of questions. Number one, I'm assuming that when we go from a property that needs to be rezoned to a byright use, and we double the density with that byright use, we have no way to capture impacts on any infrastructure? And if we had proffers, they would not offer any proffers to build on that particular piece of property? In other words, it's
In other words, would they have to improve Sensi Road if it showed that there was?
Right. With the rezoning, they would have to seek agency comments, and they would have to mitigate the impacts that they have. They would have a V. comment, they would have a Parks and Rec, they would have a planning, they would have all the agency comments that are typical with a rezoning application.
Okay. Let me answer my second question. Thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else? Supervisor Dunn?
The vote tonight is ascended to public hearing at the Planning Commission, not at the Board of Supervisors. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Mrs. Perkins, is there a way to preserve the mission, as I understand it, of St. Paul's on the Hill to provide age-restricted facility without making a rezoning or some other avenue other than the comp plan amendment to upscale it to a UD?
The only assurance the county would have for age-restricted development would be a rezoning. It assured it that the comp plan amendment would not be able to do that.
And would we be able to entertain both a rezoning and the comp plan amendment at the same time?
They could be processed concurrently.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have one last question. Since this property is currently zoned RP, as I understand it, it's been many, many years ago that it took on this form of density. Do you recall what year this was originally rezoned for its current state?
The property would have been shown on the 1964 zoning map as either R1, R2, R3. All of those were consolidated to the RP district in 1990, so it's had an RP even though it had the same land use back in the 1964 maps.
And it would have allowed then the 10 units per acre?
Barring any ordinance amendments that have changed the density. Right.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Anyone else? Given if a rezoning was being considered, is there a way to get to their density within our current zoning ordinance?
There are two options. One is if they wanted to do the age-restricted multifamily housing. That would take a rezoning because it has to be in a proffered, age-restricted development. That does have a density of 20 units per acre. The only other way to get them the density they want is the comp plan amendment to do the other housing type.
That's what I was looking for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just repeat your first comment, please. The comp plan amendment, and then just slowly walk through. What was your first comment, please?
The comp plan amendment would give them the allowance of 20 units an acre
Right.
Because they want to develop with the high-density residential multifamily housing type. The other option to still get the 20 units an acre is to rezone to age-restricted, which would allow them to still do 20 units an acre with the age-restricted multifamily housing.
Thank you.
They're two different housing types.
Thank you.
Other questions, Ms. Perkins?
Thank you.
So the request is whether or not we feel it's ready to send forward to public hearing. So that's what we're being asked to decide this evening.
And Mr. Wyatt is also here.
Yes, I'm sorry. Mr. Wyatt, thank you, sir. No, that wasn't intentional.
I know that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Evan Wyatt of Greenwood Engineering, representing St. Paul's in this request. Just a very quick snapshot of the proposal. St. Paul's, as Supervisor McCann Slaughter said, is a mission church, and what they desire to do is to advocate housing for elderly, lower-income residents of the community. And I think this is really a benefit and an important opportunity for this population of our community because conventional developers just don't build this kind of housing because there's no profit in it. Okay? So it does take a partnership, such as St. Paul working with a development partner, which in this instance is Wesley Housing Development Corporation, to make something like this happen. The ability to do the project very simply is to raise the existing church, to build a new St. Paul's church that's oriented closer to Sensi Road, that is connected to a four-story building that's intended to be designed to provide for 59 one-bedroom units and 11 two-bedroom units for elderly residents. The interesting thing about this property, of course, it's in the Sewer and Water Service area and the urban development area, and it's already zoned for residential use, is the fact that this particular housing product type that is needed to serve this type of population cannot be developed simply because the comprehensive plan doesn't designate the property being in the urban center, similar to properties directly across the road that are zoned RP, properties to the immediate east, and then, as Candace said, the larger center. So the purpose of the comp plan amendment is to allow for St. Paul's to move forward with Wesley Housing to get the opportunity to do this project. It seems like the conundrum that the county is struggling with is the ability to control the property to ensure that what we say is going to happen is going to happen. And I understand that to a degree. But a couple of things that we need to make sure we understand. First of all, I do agree that the only guarantee, from the county's perspective, to guarantee that it is an age-restricted, is to proffer a age-restricted product. So unfortunately, the problem with that is an age-restricted multifamily residential unit requires 100-foot setback going internally to the property from the property lines. Our property's 250 feet in width. We can't build the facility with that type of age-restricted multifamily user. The other thing is, obviously, presumably, it's an opportunity to seek monetary proffers, as an example. But when you think about this particular project, because of the specifically attributable impacts legislation and what monetary proffers can be accepted for by the county, there are no impacts to schools. There are no capital projects for Greenwood, fallen tier fire, and rescue, and so on and so forth. So any opportunity for monetary proffers would be very minuscule, if at all. So it begs the question, if you take the leap of faith and do what St. Paul is requesting, how do you guarantee they're going to keep their end of the bargain, other than the fact, of course, we certainly believe what St. Paul says they're going to do? But the real answer is this. St. Paul's is the landowner, and they will continue to be the landowner. They will land lease the area in which the facility is going to be constructed to Wesley Housing, who will be responsible for construction, for ownership, for maintenance, and so on and so forth. And the land lease that the church will establish with them is a 99-year land lease that will say, "Our property is only allowed to be used for a facility that is in support of our mission, which is elderly affordable income housing." So you do have that ability to guarantee that what they're saying they're going to do, they're going to do. This is kind of a quirky situation where it's the first time in my career I'm remembering when property is zoned, but you have to point back to the comp plan to do a project, but it is what it is. But with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions of Mr. Wyatt, anyone?
I have one.
Supervisor Dunn?
Mr. Wyatt, with a 99-year lease, if the church sold the property for whatever reason, they decide to move, et cetera, what happens then? Does that, if they build a building, they have a 99-year lease with certain restrictions, does that still stay or not, or if the land is sold?
Well, once again, the St. Paul's, the ability for them to sustain and maintain their operations on the property, because as you know, the existing facilities are 50-year-old building and so on and so forth, they're part of the whole. They are there, they are part, that's where their church will be, and it will be attached to and part of the building. So they would not have any intentions to sell the property under this scenario.
Second question, Mr. Chairman. You made the comment about proffers, and Greenwood is less than a mile away.
Mm-hmm.
And then you made the comment about capital projects. So if there were a rezoning, would proffers cover somebody needing to be taken to the hospital?
No, sir.
Or an emergency?
No, sir.
Can you then describe what the proffers would cover if they?
Sure. The monetary contributions to the county are intended to provide by state legislation support for capital projects that the county is being burdened with and therefore assessing the taxpayers, such as building a new school. With Greenwood, they're not, the county does not have on their CIP that they are proposing to build a new Greenwood Fire Hall. The equipment needs, I know that there's a very minor line item budget in the county that is, you know, that goes across the board for all the volunteer companies, and that's about it. Of course, with this particular project, and then the other thing, too, of course, it was a struggle several years ago, but I believe all, if maybe all but one, of the volunteer fire companies chose to go for fee-for-service for that type of support. So there is a revenue for that use. So once again, if you're talking about monetary proffers, it really doesn't go towards the operation side of things. It's really more capital facilities cost.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Anyone else?
Chairman.
Yes, sir. Supervisor McCarthy?
Mr. Wyatt, you mentioned that one of the restrictions for rezoning and doing a 55 and better community is that setback requirement. Could they not apply for variance for that setback?
So first of all, it's not a 55 and older community. It would be the financing, the agreement, the building would be strictly for elderly income-qualified residents. And I'm not going to get too deep in the weeds in the funding formula, but you take the average income value of a single person in this community, and in order to be able to qualify to live in this facility, you have to be at 60% or less of the income of the average. So if the average income for a single person was $30,000, you would be making $22,000 or less in order to qualify to be here. So it's not your typical 55 and older community. It's really earmarked for a section of our population that needs this type of housing.
So to follow up on that, would there be potential for folks under the age of 55 that would qualify for housing within the community?
That's not what St. Paul's is looking for. I may have to ask Mr. Paul Brown with Wesley Housing to further address that because they've done several of these projects.
And I'd like to get that, but before he addresses that, could you answer the first question, which was, could they not apply for a variance on the setback?
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, we could certainly make an application for a variance, but the first question would be, what is the hardship? Why can't you do what you do? And we could certainly utilize practical difficulty because of the configuration of the lot, but I think in the truest spirit of a variance approval, they're not obligated to grant us a variance if you can make use of the property for some other purpose, which you could.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. My name is Paul Brown. I'm the Vice President of Real Estate for Wesley Housing. So we plan, we hope to develop this project and would finance it with low-income housing tax credits, which is a federal subsidy administered by the state agency. And we would covenant to the state agency that we would reserve the property for elderly, which in this case would mean 62 or older.
Thank you.
Other questions of Mr. Brown? Anyone? Thank you, sir. Mr. Wyatt?
There's other questions?
Questions for Mr. Wyatt, anyone? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Supervisor Slaughter?
May I ask Mrs. Perkins another question, please?
Please, if you would.
And I just want to be sure I understand in regard to Mr. Wyatt's response about the variance. If we simultaneously move forward with a rezoning and the change to the UD, but maybe we don't need the UD since what I think I understood you to say is, with the rezoning, we would be able to be able to obtain the number of units they want per acre, which was 20. Is that correct?
If they rezoned and did the high-density, the age-restricted multifamily housing, but following up on that, a variance wouldn't be the proper channel. It would really need an ordinance amendment.
So you still would need the ordinance amendment irregardless?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Well, I hate to interject, but I don't know, I don't see any reason or purpose to do both a comprehensive plan amendment and a rezoning. You would do one or the other. You wouldn't do both. There's no purpose served by doing both.
It sounds like they would accomplish the same, which is the density issue, but the age restriction, if you did the rezoning, would be a part of it. Is that correct?
It's really two different things, because there are two different housing types. Okay? So you have housing type 1, which is age-restricted multifamily housing. That requires a proffer into an age-restricted community. That's one housing type. If they went that way, that's the one they would need. Some form of change to the setbacks if they want to pursue that one. The second one is that high-density residential, which is also 20 units an acre, but that's one that you have to have a comp plan designation to use, so.
Which is what the request is.
I just want to be sure I'm not being confused in all of this, and that is, in order to accomplish the mission of the church, which is, I understand it, is to provide age-restricted housing. And another part of this, from my comfort level, is in perpetuity. So I understand the 99-year lease, but goodness, I hope there's many more generations to come. And so I wonder what would be the best way to go about this? And would it be with a rezoning or with the comp plan amendment? To accomplish the mission of the church, which is age restriction? I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I'm just trying to figure out which is the best way for us to approach this.
Yep. That did put her on the spot.
Yes, ma'am, it did.
I know it wasn't your intention.
Plus, it might have put her off the spot.
So we'll move on.
To try and help Ms. Perkins.
I was trying to do that, too.
The comprehensive plan amendment would enable the church to do what they have stated they want to do. What it doesn't do for the county is give you a guarantee that what happens on that property will be an age-restricted development. That's really the crux of it.
I think the current expected financing source would, but you don't know.
Right.
Thank you.
Wesley has a long tradition of great respect in the world, so. Supervisor Dunn?
The reason that I had made this proposal initially in February was that St. Paul's had come and said that they needed to get certain things done to be in place so they could go for their tax credits, which are going to be in February, I believe. If they went through the normal process, we wouldn't get through that process. The amendment process begins like in June. So I had offered that as an acceleration to address that issue, just so you know. But we did not discuss a rezoning alternative. So they were trying to get this done for this coming year so they could make their application in January of 2019 with everything in place to do so. That was the purpose behind it, as opposed to going through the normal process, which would have begun in June.
So to follow up on that comment, the rezoning timeframe would essentially, because we'd have to go through all the agency comments, just as you would with the comp plan amendment, essentially, we'd be spending the same amount of time without either one? Is that a correct statement?
Similar timeframes, right? Now would obviously be extended out if they wanted to go that route now, but rezoning four to six months, if it's expedited, on the lower end of that.
Again, I apologize for interjecting, but the drawback from the applicant's perspective is, as you heard, there are setback issues. So if they do the rezoning, it's my understanding they're going to need ordinance amendments to accomplish what they want to do. So there's really no ideal path here. So there's really no ideal path here, quite frankly. That's the situation we find ourselves in.
And from my perspective, you know, it's either send it back to the PC for the public hearing and recommendation to come back through for a decision, send it back to the PC with direction would be preferable to what you want them to look at, or send it to public hearing as requested. Other thoughts?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
First, I want to applaud St. Paul's for what they're trying to do. I think it's a really important thing, and it's very much needed. I think the thing that I'm grappling with is the situation that we have in this county, where we have an influx of demands on resources and limited ability to pay for those resources. And I believe you 100% when you say that your intention is to put in a 55 and better community. But as a real estate attorney, I've seen many times, intentions don't actually come to fruition, not because of any intentional point, but by accident sometimes. And I think what we're being asked to do here is increase density by double, which could have potentially the impact of increasing children in our schools and things of that nature. For me, it's not about proffers, because either way, there's not going to be a lot of money coming from a proffer anyway. It really boils down to, what is the impact going to be on Frederick County? And I think we have a responsibility to minimize negative impact on the county. And then, at the other hand, I'm saying, but the positive impact of a facility like this may outweigh that impact. What my concern is, at this late stage in the game, I'd hate to recommend this back to the Planning Commission, knowing that I may vote against this, because I don't have any assurances, and waste even more time for these folks, when they may be able to start another process that could get them where they want to be before their time runs out. So I'm trying to sort of balance being careful and being sympathetic to their needs. That's what I'm struggling with right now, is whether or not it makes sense to send this back and waste another couple of weeks, when we could start another procedure, or at least get it going in the meantime.
Other thoughts? Supervisor Dunn?
Mr. McCarthy, I'm empathetic to your concerns. I'll make a motion when we finish discussing this, to move it forward. And the intent would be to move it forward, knowing that the Planning Commission can hear additional comments, knowing that the applicant can come back and react to those comments, and see where we are. So I will make a motion to move it forward, see if some of the issues that you've raised, some of the issues that Mrs. Slaughter's raised, and see where we are.
Motion is to move it forward to public hearing.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Sir's second.
Second.
And the second. Further discussion?
I have one other question, for all of you. Are there amendments that you want to put onto this, before it goes to a public hearing? So I'll be, I'll listen to those, because the chairman said, "direction," so I'm just asking the question.
If we ask the PC to do something, it's helpful to them if we tell them what we'd like for them to look at. But I don't know that any of that's necessary. We would expect them to look at that each and every time they consider anything to move forward for action.
Then I would ask the Planning Commission to listen to the comments that are made tonight on the age issue, and on the other related issues, and try to address them.
So we have a motion, and second, is there any further discussion? Motion is to move it forward to public hearing. Supervisor Trout?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor McCarthy?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries, we forward it to public hearing. All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Ms. Perkins. Board liaison reports, are there any?
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Lofton?
If I may, we heard tonight, where the Social Services Department came in and actually wanted to reduce their budget, which is actually refreshing, isn't it? But unfortunately, in this next week, we may have to turn right around and increase that budget, because depending upon the amount of support, if in fact Medicaid expansion is approved, depending upon the amount of support you get from federal and state government, we're looking at anywhere from over $400,000 to at least $280,000 in local dollars, to make that happen. So I hope their delegates think long and hard before they make that vote.
I certainly hope so. Others, anyone?
Mr. Chairman.
Board liaison reports, yes. Ms. Trout?
A brief Frederick Water report. They had a public hearing on May 15, 2018, where they adopted an increase to the water and sewer base rates. They also adopted the 2019 fiscal budget, and they authorized the execution of an agreement that will facilitate the construction of the Stevenson Interceptor.
Thank you. Anyone else, board liaison reports? Citizen comments on any issue whatsoever that you might like to bring the board's attention? Would anyone? Last chance. Close the public comment portion, board of supervisors' comments.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Supervisor Dunn?
These were comments will be brief. But earlier this evening, we had some people that came and talked about schools. Now, those people not here at the moment, perhaps they can listen to this, you know, discussion. Three of us went to Brambleton in Loudoun County to try to get a better feel for other options. All of us have gone and tried to do a lot of work, to try to make the best decision for everybody in Frederick County. In Loudoun, there's a brand-new school that's been open for one year, that was built for approximately $54 million, has 1,354 students, and is fully furnished. And although we've not gotten into the details of that, we're just looking at ways to use our tax dollars wisely and still meet the needs that are being addressed. The Brambleton School is about 44% larger than the proposed school here in Frederick County, and we are trying as best we can to try to meet the needs of collaborative learning, which is what Frederick County wants, in which Loudoun County has been the forefront for that collaborative learning, and trying to provide something for Frederick County that is beneficial to everyone, the students, the teachers, the taxpayers. So just recognize that we are trying to do that, and if anyone wants to come and talk to any of us on details or information, they're welcome to do so. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry?
Go ahead, Mr. Lofton.
Okay.
Go for it.
Okay.
Supervisor Lofton, then.
I just wanted to remind everyone, and I'm sure they are cognizant of it, that this Monday is Memorial Day, and it's a time when we remember the people who died while serving in this country, or out of this country, to keep us free. And I hope that as the citizens of Frederick County go about their life and celebrating that day, and having a good time with their families and friends, that they will take a moment out to pause and remember those who have died to give us the freedoms that we so richly enjoy today.
Supervisor Trout?
Of course I have to follow that. But I concur, Mr. Lofton.
You're offered.
Well, I didn't know, yeah. That's the last time. Okay. So I just wanted to make a comment, that although I voted for the resolution passed tonight by this board regarding a replacement ailer, I don't think that it was appropriate, because rather than an appropriation of funds, I felt that it was an attempt for us to dictate school design by asking the school board to adhere to specific stipulations before we release the funds. Frankly, determining capacity or square footage is not our job, but is the job of the school board. They are elected independently and accountable to their own constituents. They did request $52 million in January of this year, and this is now May that we have brought a formal resolution to our meeting. So although I am appreciative of this board for this progress, I think it is slow, and I would encourage the school board to respond to our resolution as soon as possible. Hopefully, we can reach a further compromise, ideally at our next meeting, so that we can appropriate funds. I'm afraid that if we continue to delay, and you'll have to forgive me, because I'm not up on the exact timeline, that we might miss the fall bond cycle, or the school board would miss that. So that would further push back the timeline for our new middle school, which I think would upset many of our constituents. So I just wanted to thank the board for passing this resolution, but also state my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments, anyone? Supervisor McCarthy?
I appreciate all the folks who come out for all of our public hearings, because I think it's educational for all of us to get different perspectives. One of the things that was insinuated tonight was that this board isn't looking to the experts in planning. I would just like to point out that there's also an insinuation made that a 140,000-square-foot school wouldn't be sufficient for 900 students. I would just point out that the experts who brought us the request for 52 million, also brought us the numbers that a 140,000-square-foot school could hold 900 students. So we are relying on our school board when we make our decisions with regard to capacity. I'd also point out that Supervisor Dunn keeps mentioning the Brambleton Middle School, which is a spectacular school, and I would encourage anyone on this board to go take a look at it and see how it's being run. That school is built for 1,400 students' capacity, with an average square foot per student of approximately 121 square feet, give or take. The proposal that we are willing to consider, for 140,000 square feet for 900 students, equates to something more in the range of 100, I'm sorry, what was my number here? Was it 155? It's about 155 square feet per student. It's substantially more than other schools are within neighboring counties that are working just fine. So I just wanted to point out that I don't understand where the misconception is, that we're restricting the schools to the point where we won't be able to facilitate the 900 folks. But I just want everyone on the record to know that we are considering that, and it's, a lot of that information has come directly from the school board, using their numbers. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Anyone? Vice Chairman Lofton?
Mr. Chairman, I move we adjourn.
The adjourn is our second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? We'll stand adjourned, and thank everyone for their time, their attention, and their comments.